All right, so roll call. Sue. Phil is not here. Zach.
Here.
Mike Ahern.
Here.
John.
Here.
Carl.
Here.
Mark. And I've not heard from Mike Bouchard. Steve Whitman usually is not here on the third Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, he usually should be here. I did not hear from him, so.
Rebecca, Mike's outside on the phone.
Okay. All right.
So he'll.
Okay, so we will start with a review of the minutes from the meeting on October 7th. I was not here for this meeting. Any edits, corrections for the minutes?
Just one small one, nothing content wise, just Fountain Village Charter School was spelled wrong on the first page, like halfway down, right after communications received. It says Carter School.
Oh.
Other than that, it looks good.
Because the name Carter has been typed.
Yes, it has.
Minutes in the past year or so. On a nearby property. And actually, since I mailed that out, I did correct a couple edits, just a typos and including Mike Ahern's name was spelled wrong a couple places, so I caught those.
They put an A in there.
Yes. I got it right in some places.
Anything else? A motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's a tie.
Let's decide who got that second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining as well.
Any communications received?
The only thing to announce to you all is that, I forgot to put this in an email. So on Monday, the 25th, I believe it is, is that Monday? At 2:00 here at Town Hall in this room, there's a public hearing on the Department of Transportation's 10-year plan. And we do have two projects on the plan. One for redoing Highland Street between Broadway and the Old War Bridge Reservoir Road. Because what was done previously was not a complete rebuild of the road. So adding, that's in there for, I think, construction in 2025 and then a proposed roundabout at Smith Bridge Road. And I can't remember what year that's in there for. So if you're available to come, you might want to. It's at 2:00.
So that was what date?
Monday, the 25th. I believe it's going to be on Zoom too, you know, that's, or broadcast. I don't know if it'll be available via Zoom, but.
June, you said a proposed future roundabout at Smith Bridge. Did you say before that?
Highland Street.
What about? Any, what was the work or what was the scope?
For Highland Street? It's from, basically, the part that was done in 2018 was not.
Resurfacing?
No, it will still be sidewalks and there's a little bit of uncertainty in my mind exactly what the scope is because I wasn't here for that part of it. But a full rebuild, you know, a lot of what was done was sort of demolition of the old road and taking out the concrete pavement underneath that was all falling apart and doing some drainage work, I believe. So maybe adding more drainage with the sidewalks coming in and then, yeah, fix, because the sidewalk was never done.
So.
And there's some additional, there may be some additional, I mean, drainage work. I just, I'm not 100% sure.
And it's from Old War Bridge, maybe 100 feet towards town and then towards the intersection.
School, and I believe some realignment maybe of that intersection.
I think there's some documentation and some visuals on the website, the town website.
There may have been, they may have been, because they were taken, we were just doing some upgrades, maybe in the last week. You know, I'm sorry I don't have all the details on it. It's basically some rebuilding. So what happened was the town had a full plan for that, but the road had deteriorated so far. It's my understanding that back in, I think it was 2018, the town went ahead and did some repairs. So some of that, it will look like it's being taken out, but a lot of the work, the materials can be reclaimed. So, yeah, we actually are in the midst of starting to get that, a discussion with DOT about how we're going to manage that project, getting an engineering firm to design it and that kind of thing, so.
Is there any talk about some sort of extra access to the schools?
I believe there may be some realignment of that intersection. I can't tell you for sure what it is.
Are they talking about a roundabout at that intersection?
No, no.
Because Bill and I had talked a bunch of years ago about a road that would come from Tenney Mountain Highway up Old War Bridge Road and come into the school rather than the one that comes from the light or the intersection down. And then there's also been talk about coming along the Baker River through Alex Ray's property and coming up into the school as well, which is another possibility.
So what this hearing, is my understanding, is the state, and I can, I can send you this information. You can find it on the, a link on the DOT website, I can send it to you. So there's a draft 10-year plan that has, you know, statewide, all the proposed projects that are in that plan. So there's a process of where you apply to get a project in there. So anything additional beyond that, we would have to make a new application when the next round of applications comes in. Which is through the Regional Planning Commission, so.
The last time I remember, we had a discussion with DOT, they talked about a realignment of Smith Bridge Road, taking out potential, a potential piece of property to come straight on rather than where it is, maybe coming up 100 feet more west. Is that, I haven't seen the plans.
Yeah, and to be honest, I don't, it's, when you put a project in, you have just a rough engineering cost to get sort of a placeholder and, you know, a discussion what it is. So again, I didn't write that application. I haven't actually really reviewed it in any detail. But the idea is that it's, at least it's in there and it's scored high enough to have it there and, you know, it's, so the Highland Street, the engineering can start pretty much this winter as long as it stays at the same place within the plan and the priorities don't get shifted. But it's, we're on schedule for starting now. And then, but with all the design and right-of-way work and things, construction doesn't happen until, I think it's '24 or '25.
And it's all talk, going to be discussed on the same night, both projects?
Yeah, so this is a hearing on the entirety of the 10-year plan. But they do the, all of these things regionally to give an option to have, you know, more access so people can, you know, voice support for at least the projects that we have in there. To talk about additional projects, the idea would be another application in the future we would have to make.
And when is the date?
Monday, the 25th at 2:00 here.
That's like four days?
Yes.
And what time again?
Two.
All right, that was it for communications?
Yes.
No applications or public hearings this evening?
No.
Any informational or pre-application reviews?
No.
Looks like we have some other business from staff.
Yes, you can listen to me some more. I guess, going back to the pre-application reviews, I did have a discussion recently with a potential, a phone conversation with somebody who's looking at a parcel for a subdivision. They wouldn't, they didn't say how many lots, but it would be a major subdivision on a road. They were asking about steepness of road. It's a kind of a hilly site, so they're trying to figure out if it's worth, you know, doing, but to be determined. It's the second conversation I think I've had with them about it. And then another, another thing on Tenney Mountain Highway or nearby there that is still very, just a couple questions about, but. So people are still looking and working on things. But anyway, going on to updates, just, I put this on the agenda about the RAP City Site Plan Application because that was a conditional approval from, I believe, early September, September 2nd or something around there. And there was a lot of engineering comments for the applicant's engineer to review and address and from, comments from our town engineer. And we've heard nothing, so I did talk to the owner of the site, Mr. McGinley. I talked to him, I guess, last week. And so he checked, we've emailed a few times. So the engineer that has been working on that is claiming very busy, but I'm pushing him, saying, hey, you pushed the board to get a conditional approval, if we remember that. And we've heard nothing since that happened. So he did say they'll try to get something by the end of the month, so that would probably be next week. So we'll see. So, again, I had it on the agenda, thinking we might have something to, more to say about it. But haven't forgotten it.
All right. Now on to zoning ordinance amendments. Just in looking at the minutes, it looks like the non-conforming lot structure and uses was generally well received by the board and perhaps ready for us to.
Yeah, well, you want to talk about this firsthand? I didn't put all the handouts out, I was trying to keep everybody under suspense. So I pulled back a little bit and tried to think in response to some of the discussion last time to just maybe ask the board to think about this a little broader. You know, kind of what, what are we seeing as problems to try to address and then drill down to figure out how to do it? As I mentioned in my email to you, I haven't had a lot of time because of the holiday and just other busyness of things. But, so, and also I was a little reluctant to invest a lot more time in really specific recommendations because I want some more decision from the board here about where that investment of time would be best put in support of moving down the path of getting to some amendments. So I put this together of kind of thinking of what are the problems we need to address in a broad sense? And I, you've, you've heard me say this before, but go over it again, that, you know, I feel like there's a lot of parts of the ordinance that aren't current, they're conflicting, unclear. So it's hard for people to understand and certainly hard for us to administer. So that's where we're focusing in on some of the big items of non-conformity. I mean, fences doesn't seem like a big deal, but I don't know how to tell somebody what kind of fence they can have, given what we've got. Try to simplify that and try to address some general conflicts that I have some notes about in the ordinance. I haven't totally gotten to on that yet. We may not get to everything this year, that's fine. So the second item is just from a planning point of view and looking at some of the things that we see in the master plan. You know, trying to think about land uses and certainly housing is a serious problem in New Hampshire, in our region. We had the presentation that kind of talked about it. I actually went through a presentation about the 2020 census, some of the preliminary view that UNH has kind of put out and the state data center had a good presentation about it. And while it's not drilled down yet to like what's happening exactly in Plymouth, you know, everything is pointing to aging population, changes. A lot of our population growth in New Hampshire has really come from migration and it is somewhat a younger group, but it's not enough, enough to really tip the fact that we are one of the oldest states in the country in terms of. So there's a lot of factors. It was really interesting, actually, of the high, we actually have a fairly high percentage now of people that were non-native to New Hampshire. It's like 65% or something of the state was not from New Hampshire. So we've had this huge amount of migration over decades, you know. But so, all that other stuff. So anyways, you know, the, the housing problem, trying to think about what's out there. We certainly have heard stories when we don't keep good data here in town about how many, you know, what rents are and all that. I mean, it's very difficult with the student population to count units too and know everything that's going on. But, you know, we do know that there's, there's problems. And there's also stories about, you know, that can be hard for employers too, to find workers that can't move to an area if, or affords a stay, depending on the housing, you know, supply, demand, the price goes up. So what I've been thinking about is trying to, you know, a few years back, the town did a good job of adopting an accessory dwelling unit, the ADU requirements. But I feel that there's, there needed to be some clarity. I told you, I've just updated these application forms. We actually created one for a conditional use permit for ADUs. So that was a big, kind of a step to do that, outside of kind of the ordinance, just having a process there for the form. Now we have an application fee for it. And we have to notify Butters, that kind of thing. And there's an old definition in there or section about accessory dwelling, excuse me, accessory family dwellings that's very conflicting with the ADU, so my recommendation, again, kind of cleaning up just to take that out. And then we've talked last, last couple of weeks ago about density and maybe allowing some opportunity to have more than six units per building, so we can continue that detail about that as we go on tonight. And then the third item is sort of the idea of, you know, things change over time. We have new uses come up. I've mentioned those storage units before, you know, we consider them a commercial service, but it'd be nice just to have that in there. So somebody from the public reading, I, I had a conversation with somebody else that wants to build more storage units in Plymouth and they're, is this allowed? They didn't, they, they're very astute, they're very experienced with reading ordinances. They're like, I don't see it in your ordinance, so. And they had kind of said, well, could it be a commercial service? And I said, well, that's what we're considering it, but they were like, well, it'd be nice to have that. So they could have just figured that out on their own, you know. So those are the kinds of, I mean, they seem like simple things and it's good to have conversations with people, but it also can be confusing when we're not as up to date. So that's where we're kind of working on some of the definitions, which I have some more information around housing definitions. And John gave me a nice list. We definitely need to do new definition of tree. So. The current definition isn't exactly a good one. So that, you know, there's things like that to clean up. But then, you know, we've had recent proposals for campgrounds, which personally, I, I would interpret the ordinance to say we do not permit campgrounds. There was, may have been a different administrative decision about that when we had an application before I came. Because you really don't, if you read it, I don't see how we have campgrounds. Is that something we'd want to allow? But if we do, we should have some really strict criteria that helps prevent, you know, for safety in flood areas, water, sewer, all those other kinds of components that we want to make sure for sanitation reasons and location wise. And then we are having, as the season gets a little into fall, almost a little, little chillier. There's, we've have had recently a few phone calls about a couple of abandoned buildings in town. And so our building inspector code enforcement officer is feeling and that there's very minimal and he's kind of looked and thinking about what some other towns have addressed this problem. And we may even want to make some suggestions to allow us to more, more quickly be able to move ahead on an abandoned structure, perhaps. With, you know, again, we don't have to, it's just nice to have it there so we could take some steps beyond waiting for three or four years for somebody to not take, pay the taxes and take it over through non-payment of taxes. But in some cases, we have a couple of abandoned structures where people are actually still paying the taxes. So we have no way of really moving ahead to try to protect the neighborhood and make it a safe, you know, we're carrying some things that are not so, not so good. And again, if we can get a site sort of, maybe a building torn down, if we so choose to take that route, then you may have a site for redevelopment in, that's already got some, some amenities on it. So that's one. And then the other one is recreational vehicles and camping, you know, how long can you stay living in a recreational vehicle? Even if you have water and septic? We want to touch that one. Not, not a campground, but if I wanted to buy a lot and go live in a camper in it, is that allowed? So that's becoming a problem. And it's related, I think, to the housing, you know, people can't afford to live somewhere. That's what we hear, so. So those are sort of the bigger kinds of big picture things that I've been trying to, just wanted to pull back and kind of review with you before we get into too many aspects tonight about it, so. Is that helpful, questions?
So I can't remember the name of the woman that's helping out on short-term.
Susan Slack from Lakes Region Planning Commission, yep.
Have you or her done any thinking about what could be done from the town's perspective to make single, new development of single-family homes subdivisions easier and the process maybe streamlined so that the developer has a better chance to provide cheaper single-family lots? Is there any discussion about that?
So our ordinance does have a open space provision in the zoning ordinance, which does, which has been used in, it's funny, the BIKO on fairgrounds, the development that's starting to take off a little bit more on fairgrounds, Blacky's area. That was originally, they are moving ahead now with bringing in a lot more units and they are planning, as I understand it, because they are selling what they have. So we're seeing a few more building permits there. We've met with them to try to understand, but that was originally approved as a cluster or open space. So it has some different setback requirements, some smaller lots, I believe, under that provision. So it has been used, it's still there. Could it be updated a bit? Yes. But there's a lot of ways we can work with somebody and that's really, from a planning tool, that's the best way to do it. And we already have that in place.
I'm wondering whether, like, in the agricultural zone, it's one acre zoning, if we could go to something less than that, which would make it even more advantageous for someone to bring a development, still keep some open areas possibly. Whether that's something we should think about since the house lots, there's no one local really that can afford them anymore. And we need to be thinking of what we can do.
Again, in some cases, especially in the agricultural zone, when we don't have sewer available, sometimes you need more than half acre for water, well and septic, to be able to get the spacing between you and your neighbors and have that. So, yeah, I think it's a matter of taking a step back and, it's, it's worth considering if the board wants to do that, so.
I'm just so happy we didn't go to five acre zoning and really shoot ourselves in the foot with what we almost tried to do. Almost three.
Three. I mean, there is verbiage in the master plan as well that does try to preserve the distinction between the greater space of the ag zone versus denser development, particular areas where we want to see denser development. Now, there is, I think I agree that there's a benefit of having some more development of land for single-family homes. At the same time, how do you do that in a way that does preserve some of that distinction between space and denser development and not to kind of sprawling out too much?
I guess the other thing to consider, we have a lot of, you know, in the, in some areas, we, you know, Plymouth is a lot of wetlands, a lot of flood plain and a lot of steep slopes. So there are some, you know, that, you know, we hear sometimes about, you know, those kinds of tools, but they are, I think, I always feel like they're better designed for flat gravelly places with good soils.
See, that's the thing that's always, always kind of bothered the old timers that the best place, easiest place to develop was the flood plains or the farmlands. And so that would force everybody to take up all the, all the land that could support us with food. And because it was more costly to build up on the hillsides, they would shy away from that. And the slopes and soils kind of forced everybody onto this beautiful land that probably is not the best suited for, for housing, like the upperlands. And so I don't know if there's anything we can do to make it easier for people to develop the upperlands.
Well, developing on steep slopes is also not that great for water quality and environmental health, so.
It's all the same.
Steep slope, development on steep slopes is certainly different than developing on, on level ground as far as impacts to water quality. So, you know, it's just another, it's another thing to consider as we look at what's the best place for development, so.
It's just a little more challenging to put a septic system in, steep slopes, tough site. You gotta, you gotta spend a little bit more on the septic versus beautiful sandy soils on the flatland.
Some of the language that June put into the material she sent out to us is, I think, useful in thinking about denser development along existing water and sewer lines. And that's kind of solves some of the problem of it sprawling out too much because you're concentrating it in certain areas that have services ready anyway.
Ken, that's a, that's a great observation and I would, is there any area that is, has access to water or sewer or both? It's agricultural now, that if it got changed to residential, could go to quarter acre zoning versus agriculture with both of them would only be half acre, right? Is that, I might not remember that right.
Yeah, I, I think, I'd have to check the maps for sure, some possibly.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds Road and then Yeton Road has at least sewer.
And I think that's a nice place to look at, to see what we could do to get some cheaper lots in Plymouth. Those are the types of things that I would think we should be looking at as a planning board.
So I have some more handouts here, so let me, there's yours.
First, I thought we were live on paperwork tonight.
No, not when it comes to zoning amendments.
What's going to be on the midterm?
Susan Slack's name.
Yeah, that would be the extra credit question.
Had some minor changes as a result of the last discussion. No, I kind of, if I might just kind of go through these in order I have from there, maybe we can do the easier ones first. Oh, I lost my, my copies of them. I have them all in order here somewhere. So. Yeah, I got it here. So the first one is really about non-conforming uses. I think we've talked about that. What I was going to suggest, based on the last meeting, was to just take out that in the bottom of the first page, that seasonal use aspect. So I guess I would like the board to consider, hopefully you've read this with that one change, to kind of give the go-ahead to. At some, at some point, as we approach a public hearing time, we need to put these things into the zoning ordinance and see how it really looks, you know. We can talk about what I started with, sort of these three main points of big areas to address, but you have to find, okay, Article 3, Section 304, it needs to be changed from this to this in order to build the, the ordinance. And I think that, that's really where it gets difficult. So we can, we don't have to, you know, make a final decision on this tonight, but I would like, I guess, I know we've talked about how to get feedback on this, so I'm giving you this as kind of a, you know, revised draft and give me feedback on it. And we can move ahead as you want on it.
I, I had one question. This is 405.3.2B, the location of after destruction and demolition. So you're supposed to relocate as best you can to meet the setbacks. However, you may reuse the existing foundation and not move. I'm wondering, let's say there's a circumstance.
Yeah.
In which, and I can think of a few streets, we have a bunch of houses on a street that aren't meeting the front setback.
Right.
And one of them gets demolished.
Right.
And for some reason, the foundation goes with it.
Yep.
And you probably want a new house to be in line with all the other setbacks, even though the foundation might not be there and you're not maximizing the setback as you're supposed to.
Yep.
So I would say if, if there's some kind of language there that says also rebuilding in the same place for those sorts of reasons, you know, I'm not articulating this well, but you know what I'm getting at?
Yep. That's the case on 30 Hyde Street and the house we tore down. And because of the proper demolition procedures, they have to collapse the foundation, so.
You'd want a new house to match the other front of this.
Yeah, so we can find a way of talking, there's usually a term of like a building line. Maintain. Maybe we, they can ask to have that done by, I don't know, some kind of documentation or something. Again, within a timeline, you know, what if somebody tore down a house 20 years ago? We don't really know where the foundation's gone and somebody says, oh, it was here. I don't know, it might be hard to document it over time.
With the neighboring houses.
Yeah, that's what I would say. Everyone else is still there.
Really less about where that house was and more about the, you know, the kind of character of the street.
Okay. We can figure out a way to do that, try to, and then amend it again.
Generally though, as far as moving forward with just.
Generally, though, as far as moving forward with just fine, fine tuning some of this language, is the board good with moving forward on getting this non-conforming, cleaning up the non-conforming stuff, getting this to town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah? All right, okay.
I would have some questions. It's, it's hard to look at this.
705?
705. And try and figure out what we're removing, and what we're changing, and what we're adding, by looking at this sheet of paper. I didn't do, I didn't always do well with business law and understanding words that are not how you would speak normally.
Removals are crossed out on a, like, later pages, too.
Are those the only changes, or are there some editorial text changes as well that are kind of mixed in?
In this one, I think it's pretty much, like, then the fourth line down on the first page, it says, delete the current text in Section 405. So I didn't bother to put that entire text and cross it out, but take all of that out and drop this in, because it's such a major rewrite, yeah.
So you can't see the actual what's changing.
I mean, I can do that, it just, I was trying to have not quite as long a handout.
Yeah, I'm just really not understanding.
Well, one of the big changes was dividing out uses, lots, and structures.
So we have one area of 405 that's just very general about these things, and it's, well, it has some different parts, but it doesn't, it's hard to read and understand. So what I'm suggesting is making it clear, making it more clear, having a new kind of purpose statement for it, and then a Section Point one, non-conforming lots, Point two, non-conforming uses, and then Point three, non-conforming structures. All right? And then some, some components under that.
Could, could we start with what is there now?
Yeah.
Through that? And then, talk about why we don't like that.
It really doesn't make any sense, I think, is what we've come across, is, I mean, this is it here, it just, it really, it's not structured the way you'd see a non-conforming lot section, and it's just starting here, and it only deals with uses, so it talks about some uses, and then in the next page, it goes into structures, expand, and just as you read through it, I'd given you, I think, earlier a piece about it, so it's, it.
So if we start at...
It's like I read it, and read it, and read it, and try to figure out what somebody wanted to do.
Could we go through it line by line? Is that something the planning board feels like this is our job?
It seemed, I think a lot of us have gone through this, I mean, I've looked through this pretty carefully, I know we discussed it the last meeting.
We talked about some of the contradictions at previous meetings.
Yeah. And I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't know, I, you know, I got is the gist from the, from the minutes, but, but it, from what I understand, is what we have currently, it's not really worth tweaking the language that we have currently, it's just, it's, it's a total rewrite to make this section work. So, and I think that this is something, you know, I defer to June, because she's administering this stuff a lot more than, we don't really look at this section ourselves very frequently. This is something that's a little more of an administrative.
June, this handout that you just gave us is the same that you emailed this Friday?
Yes.
So the stuff I read Friday there is, okay.
Sorry, you had to not.
June, is there anything in here that's substantive, that's like, changing the rules significantly, or is it mostly clarification to make the language easier to administer?
I would say, yeah, it's mostly clarification, with the exception of what I have here is 405.1, non-conforming lots, we're pretty silent about that.
We don't talk about lots, really, in...
Well, this came up when the last boundary line adjustment for the Ahern family, because they had not enough frontage, so all the, all the two lots that were kind of in the middle there were, did not have enough frontage, so they're non-conforming. So there's, what do I have here, saying, something in here, right, right in the last paragraph of that section, changes to lots through boundary line adjustments may be made, provided that changes do not result in increasing the amount of non-conformity. And that's what we did, but we, I actually had to talk to our town's attorney, because it's like, this isn't making it conforming, it's making it just less non-conforming.
Right.
So he was kind of saying, yeah, you should have something. So you have different, you know, you can have lots that are too small, or not enough frontage, and you need to find a way to have, let people, you know, make an adjustment to those, without bringing them into full conformance.
So I, I know...
And then the other, sorry, the other one is that there is been some changes in the statutes a number of years ago about, a lot of times, lots have been merged through, for assessing purposes, so that there's an addressing of that, so somebody isn't caught by some involuntary lot merger, which they can now undo anyway, but.
I know I'm not an attorney, and I know attorneys can each lay out their case for, why certain things like this mean one thing, and someone else might say it means another. And there's, I like to think there was a reason it was written the way it was, to throw it out and start from scratch, concerns me, especially if I don't, if I can't see it exactly why we're doing it. There has to be a reason. Why is it broken? And if it is broken, do we really need to start from scratch? That's my big concern.
It seems like a lot of people were confused when they were reading it. And if people get confused reading it and don't know what it means, then it should probably be clarified. And I think what we did here, what June did with some assistance, is find ordinances that worked well, and try to borrow from them, and bring it into our own particular circumstances, meld it together, and come up with something that's gonna confuse fewer people and cause less headaches going forward.
I think it's not just that it's confusing people, it's confusing people who read zoning ordinances for a living, that write zoning ordinances for a living. If those folks can't read through and understand, and if our town attorney is recommending that we need something about non-conforming lots.
So what has our town attorney said, exactly?
Well, I haven't gone to have him review this yet, we're not at that point, because it costs money.
But we had an issue with not having information about non-conforming lots.
And I also could point out, like, on Section four, there are existing Section 401.2, which is, I've got, I do have on the third page of the handout.
401.2?
You go to the third page of the handout, like, okay, text in that middle of the page that I'm deleting there, there's conflicts, okay? So it's, if you read Item C, to start with, no structure can be constructed, basically unless it meets a side minimum yard of 15 feet on either, it's a minimum side yard of 15 feet on either side, except no side yard can be less than 10 feet. So those two statements conflict in one sentence. How can you meet a minimum of 15, but you can go to, you can't be less than 10? So who dares to decide if it's 15 or 10?
So that seems like an easy fix.
Right, and this is about trying to address existing lots of record and being the right to build on, so I'm saying, take, we have that by saying, non-conforming structures in the previous page that I have there, that you certainly have the right to build a structure on a non-conforming lot, and it actually updates it to this issue of, we also have this thing, if you own the lot next door, you have to combine it to basically make it conforming, and that's not fair.
Where does it say that?
It currently says that, no structure shall be constructed on any non-conforming lot, if the owner of the lot owns an adjacent vacant land, which if combined, would create a non, create a conforming lot. You can't make somebody combine their land. So that's like, that's just like wrong, that's currently in our ordinance. And we had somebody asking about that.
When did that get added? Because that wasn't there 30 years ago.
I have no idea when it got added.
Sometime in 30 years?
Yeah.
That's an, that one's awkward, though.
That seems like it was just...
And I could, you know, I could own a parcel, like, with Zach, and one, you know, by myself and the other, and really, I owned the two, but I just put your name on the deed so I don't have to merge them, you know what I mean? It's sort of, it doesn't make any sense.
And that seems, and that seems like an easy fix, you remove that line. It seems like, I'm concerned that we're delegating this to someone else, when maybe there's just easy fixes this board can do, just by going line by line, rather than throwing the whole thing out, and making it, making it make sense. It sounds, those two items right there sound very easy to fix.
I think what, what June has tried to explain is that there are so many little fixes, that it's just these tiny little changes that then just make it even messier, that this is a better restructure, it's, it's better best practices for a non-conforming section within our zoning ordinance.
That's the only section that's being completely rewritten here, though, right? Like, the, the change to 401 is, like you suggested, Mike, it's a targeted, these three items make no sense, let's remove them.
And we're incorporating it in a different way.
Right, and then similarly, Section 304 is again, a section where, where you're saying, these are crazy to, to administer, and I don't want, I don't think these are good, right? Like, that's...
That one in particular was just in the wrong place, so it's, it's, so it's getting moved.
So that ends up getting incorporated into the non-conforming lots section that gets added.
And we might end up doing some renumbering of things.
And it clarifies to separate it to lots, the structures, and the uses, which once you do that, you're talking about rewriting the whole thing anyway.
So I'm looking at B that's crossed out, no structure shall be constructed on a non-conforming law, unless it shall have a front yard conforming to the minimums required for the zone. So we're taking that out because we're wording it a different way?
Yes.
No structure shall be constructed on a non-conforming lot, unless it shall have a minimum side yard of 15 feet on either side, and then, except no side yard shall be less than 10 feet. And I do understand why you take out that last part, and it makes it okay, sees fine after that. And so we're thinking of replacing that with...
With, on Page two, Section, what I've numbered, currently numbered 405.3.2B, location of where you can rebuild a structure, under demolition is one part, sorry, and then there's, under the other part, all of the thing about that whole section.
So it looks like...
All the alterations in the diagram of how you could add on to it, and then, and then the top of Page three, for things that are not conforming, other types of additions, so.
Do you mind if I read through the 405.3.2? You can read through those two sections and see, we can kind of dissect it as we go, that our job?
I mean, I, if you need to, that's fine, I think I've picked through this pretty thoroughly, myself, but if that's what you need, then go for it.
I don't want to hold everybody up, but this is kind of a, a big change.
I take it back, also, the, under existing lots of record, the real, the real statement is really on the first page, I take that back, so it being replaced by 405.1, non-conforming lots, and then the...
So we're adding...
Basically saying that if you have a non-conforming lot, you can build on it, provided that all other regulations are met, period, you know?
Yeah, but that's a, this is a lot of words to replace what you just said in 15 words.
That's what's in here, though, and then it gives some, you know, but you have to make sure that it was non, that meets the definition of non-conforming, that's what the A, B, and C part is.
I think the mics point, though, a little bit, and I'm certainly not as well, versus other people around the table, so take this with a grain of salt, but, you know, if I was to propose deleting current text in Section 405 to somebody, I would probably show them, here's 405, and here's what I want to replace it with, and...
I can do that, do another handout another time.
I mean, I just think that you, for me personally, it's easier to look at, here's what it says currently, read it, it's three paragraphs, four paragraphs, whatever it is, here's what it's going to be.
Can we...
I think it's just easier for me to, to do it that way. And I don't have this stuff, and maybe it...
Okay, so can we mark his, and... Why don't I just do another, adding that piece in, about what we're suggesting deleted, so it's all on the same page, and then mail it out to you guys, I can do that tomorrow.
Great.
And then you can have it for the next meeting, rather than trying to wordsmith it, because just can't do that here.
I, yeah, I have a hard time here, listening to things being read. Does everyone have a copy of the zoning ordinance? Okay. Mark, do you have?
I don't have, I don't know if someone prepared you guys the binders, but, or you did.
I'm sorry, no, 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 this...
I don't, I mean, I can look, I don't think so.
Okay, well, certainly.
It could be me, it could be hiding under a pile of things, it's certainly possible, but I don't...
I feel like you came in and got it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's possible, it's certainly possible.
I'll get you another one, make sure you have it, okay.
Okay, so we'll have a side-by-side comparison of these, of these two sections.
That would be great.
Okay, I need my page of the zoning ordinance back, so I don't, because I got other notes on it.
All right, so it sounds like we'll have to determine, finally, if we're kind of in the right zone at our next work session in two weeks.
The right zone.
What's that?
The right zone.
All right. Next up, fences. Um, fences.
Well, here, I'll agree with you, because I read the fence stuff last week, and it makes no sense. I was just thinking, if you had drafted, and maybe it's in here, but a draft of what you think makes no sense.
And I do have an update that's in the handout I just gave you tonight, about, I did go back and tried to look at our definition of a fence, which originally I thought was okay, but then I looked at it more closely, and had a conversation for some advice about it, and that person said a couple things, so I'll get to that. So yes, the first page of your handout is basically my summary of, I have no clue what, what kind of fence you can do, or when, or where, or how, so what I would suggest is, there's two parts to this that aren't probably entirely in order, but let's, let's go to the middle of the second page, the definitions, okay? I don't think I have a colored version, but I did add some comments to the side, that our current definition is, I'm not gonna read it, you can have it in front of you, it's based on the definition from RSA 473.5, legal fences. If you read what's I have in that box on the side, the right-hand side, it basically is the same, right down to other things being deemed by fence viewers. So who knows what a fence viewer is? So apparently, there was once upon a time, back in 1800s or something, this statute originates from, when fence viewers were assigned jobs in town, so I'm asking Scott Whedon to become a fence viewer for us, since he has already building a Inspector Code Enforcement and Emergency Management Directive, he might as well make him fence viewer.
What kind of training do you need for that?
I don't know, we can ask somebody. So it was, the purpose of a fence viewer was when there was more, because the thing was more agricultural then, when people would put up a fence, you know, separating my pasture from yours, when we had, there was lots of stuff in the statute about maintaining those fences, and when there was a dispute over, I'm supposed to do this part, or you're supposed to do this part, the fence viewer would be called in to mediate and settle that dispute. So, I don't think that's really what we want to get into, we do not have a fence viewer, and I'm not taking that on. So, the newer definition that's more based in land use, not in archaic boundary line disputes, is really, the one that I came up with based on reviewing several other definitions, is that enclosure barrier constructed of wood, masonry, stone, wire, metal, or other manufactured material, or combination of materials erected as a boundary to enclose, screen, or separate areas, okay? So that's what I would propose as the new definition for a fence, and delete the, and replace the old one with that. And then if you go up above, Section 414, fences, which we have in our ordinance, just rewrite everything that's in that one, and just have basically saying, I need to check on the RSA still, but basically, fences less than six feet are permitted within the side and rear setbacks, except all fences need to be at least one foot, unless it's a common fence, which would be right on the boundary. Any fences over six feet have to have a special exception, and any fence located within the front yard setback over four feet has to have a special exception. A lot of that has to do with sight distance, maintaining good, you know, visual, and safety, being able to see into the yard, what's going on there. Any fence over four feet high should require building permit prior to installation. Fences four feet high or less do not require building permit, and that's kind of consistent, I think, with what we have now. And then any, basically, any kind of agricultural or safety fences are exempt, so. Basically, taking all that other junk on the front page, whoops, and getting rid of what we, you know, adjusting what we have in 414 for that, adjusting the definition of a fence. the definition of a fence, and then, yeah, so we're not going to be calling them accessory structures anymore, so therefore, it kind of cleans up of when you need a special exception or not, just how, they're their own thing, they're not an accessory structure. So we would also take fences out of the definition of accessory structure.
It seems to me like the, everything is made a lot more clear the way it's written instead of, like I can actually read the section as it's proposed, versus the other one, I just can't, I just, like I get really stuck on side yard and hedges and, yeah.
Creeks and ditches.
I know this will come out in the final, like, reread, but there is a typo that won't come out in a spell check, which is statues versus statutes.
Okay.
So June-
Which is four fourteen, the last bullet point, state statutes.
State statutes. Good catch.
That's great. And then, the planning board thirty years from now is like, was this like that, that old thing, like the fence viewers?
We need a statue viewer.
So June, the part that, that is in the town reg, zoning ordinance now, is the part that's highlighted right here on definitions on this page? Because there's, I'm looking at it, there's one here and there's one here.
So again, I emailed this out with the exception of the definition part, so it's on that, you know, the, if you go to the page, the first page, which is, starts with questions, has on the top of it, it says questions, that's the current text, everything on that page is currently there. All right, and I apologize for not having the colored version, again, if you want to look at this one, the yellow highlights is really what's confusing, and the red is where I had some questions I put in, so I, I apologize for not making the colored copy, I didn't realize that until just now. Because there's just a lot of conflicts about, that's why I put those questions, like, whatever they were, at the top of the page now, so.
I just worry that, if I can, I just worry that if we don't take this as a board, when we make changes, the level of importance to changing these regulations and how it will affect our, the residents down the road, that we need to really think about it because of the consequences down the road. And we think that, oh, you know, this, this ordinance that we have is terrible, and, and I've said this to this planning board before, I've made changes to the property that we've had forever, and I think, oh, you know, the way that it was, way that it was, was terrible, and I'm going to make some improvements, and next thing I know, I got flooding in my basement. And so, we think we're doing the right thing, we think we're making it better, but it doesn't always work out that way, and sometimes then you, you look back and say, wow, Plymouth had that for a reason. And I'm not saying, there's not some obvious changes that need to be made that we can fix, but when you start making large wholesale changes, it's, it's a lot of responsibility, and I worry that we may not be doing our due diligence, or use a word that my brother uses too much.
So Mike, I mean, I, I, I look at the changes that are being, to the fences and the non-conformity, and most of the changes are in how we are articulating and clarifying what we already have. I don't see many very serious content changes, there are a few, but most of it, I think, is just making it clearer to read, to interpret legally, and get, I think, everybody, lawyers, planners, us, planning board, fewer headaches. I think that's the intent here.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree, John, that there's not a whole lot of substantive change, it's a lot of clarity and some removal of contradiction, and, and just a lot of addition of clarity of language that makes it, it's like just refiling everything in a place that makes a lot more sense. And I, I see that in both the, the fences and the, the, the non-conformity section, so.
And that very well could be, but none of us are, June's our person that's leading us, and I would just, I would just caution us to take our time with this and make sure that we aren't causing more problems after. And we may think, oh, it looks like it's done perfectly, and we just don't know, and I would, I would say, let's tweak what we have as much as we can, and I realize, some tweaks won't be enough, but I'd just caution the board, that's all. We're not experts at this, none of us are.
So what would you, what do we need to do to, to move forward with this?
I would say, first of all, we need someone that works with planning and zoning regulations on a regular basis, that would be willing to show, maybe there's people in town that have dealt with it, if there's someone like a, an applicant that could come forward and say, yeah, you know, and there's enough of a consensus, I'm always in favor of getting the public to come in at the beginning of the process, not once it's written, should always be at the beginning. Someone like Kevin French, we could say, you know, he works on behalf of many applicants, and he may say, you know, I applaud the board for, for trying to make some changes here, and, but we're spinning our wheels, and, you know, the real problem is here, and we just don't know, because sometimes we're too close to the situation. Or he may just say, you know, really what you need to do is just do this, and, but it'd be great to get feedback from one, two, or three others that are dealing with these things on a regular basis, and I think we need more input. And I think we need to also have it, if I were to display this, I would show what we're, what we're taking out, and right next to it with text, this is going in here, this is going in here, and rather than, this is really hard to follow, for me.
All right, so, I'm not even sure what to do here, I feel like we're just going to drag this process down by calling in for more input, more input, I'm not even sure what to do now, so.
We will get more input within a couple of months.
Right.
We'll have, we'll have probably one or two public hearings when that-
And we have to have the public hearings, and-
And you can't have a public hearing on a concept, you need to be able to say, and this is why I'm working on handouts, that I'm sorry if they're not really clear, but I will, as soon as I start dropping in the ordinance, then I'm going to be sending you a whole ordinance, and then asking you to try to find multiple places where there's changes, so it's a bit of homework for the board, and I'm trying to get stuff done a week ahead of time, but I'm, if we're going to go that route, I, I work hard in doing it, and help direct you, but I need, and then, then the next month, there's going to be more changes, and then more changes, and more changes, you know, and you're going to get confused, so I need to kind of under ti, under-
There's no deadline to this, there's no deadline.
Well, if we're going to try to get something for a town meeting, there are deadlines.
Town meetings happen every year.
Okay. If we don't want to do anything with it, then I'm spending a lot of time that I can do something else, so, but again, we're hearing from one person and not the community or the board, so.
I've spent some time looking at both of the non-conformity and the fences, I've looked at them side-by-side with the existing zoning ordinance based on the numbers that were provided. I am a hundred percent comfortable moving forward with both of these as zoning amendments.
And I, you know, I guess I would also offer, I'm giving you advice based on my many years of planning experience, I've worked on an entire rewrite of a zoning ordinance for the city of Berlin years ago, and that was a long process, and I've also run these changes and talked through them with a professional planner who's also has a legal background, went to law school, that Susan Slack from Lakes Region, we've contracted with her, she's been a great resource to read this stuff over. I know you don't know her, but I'm also trying to save time and money by not having her come to every meeting. We can ask her to zoom in some night if you want to meet her, but-
I know her.
I'm getting that, you know, her, she's, you know, worked for the state, she's worked for the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and now Lakes Region Planning Commission. She's very good, and is an attorney, so, you know, I know that can scare people off, but she's been a, another sounding board behind the scenes here. So, to say we need to have other experts come in, if you don't trust my work, fine, do that, but, you know.
I think we've also been hearing feedback from applicants as we go, and that's where a lot of the issues are coming up, as we hear questions, as we, by we, I mean June and other administrative staff at the town, hearing questions about the zoning ordinance. So I think actually the best people to talk to about where there are confusions and contradictions in the zoning ordinance are the people who are fielding questions about it from applicants on a daily basis.
And the building inspector code enforcement officer, who, you know, looks at this every single day, so.
I mean, I look at it, where are the laring issues with Plymouth, and I see it, what's happening with the student housing, and all the problems that the select board has to deal with on a regular basis, and we're not even looking at that, we're looking at other things. And I, I don't know, I don't know Susan Slack, I would, I think maybe that might put him more at ease, I'm not sure, but I think the way that it's being presented, it's, I don't feel comfortable with just the presentation, I guess. And that, it's, no, no slant to you, June, you are working tirelessly, and I give you a lot of credit for all the time and energy that you're putting into this.
We made a decision as a board several months ago, I'm not sure when it was, but to really focus as far as what we were going to do on the zoning ordinance was a cleanup and deal with contradictions, confusions, things like that. So we made a decision to not move forward with really anything else with a zoning ordinance except for emerging issues that are making our zoning ordinance difficult, and in some cases impossible to administer. So that, that's what we're doing, and so we picked a few things on the list and determined that these were priorities, and we've been workshopping through these for, for months now. So, I feel like we've, we've spent quite a bit of time on this, and that choosing these things were partly on the part of the board, but also part, on part of staff, who determine some of these priorities of things that are just making their job very difficult, and that, that's what we're, we're doing right now.
I, I, looking at the fence one here, I, this all feels very clear to me. The definition seems more in line, the removal of the fences over four feet, the getting fences defined as accessory uni, you know, accessory buildings, all of that seems like it, it's very helpful. The only thing I would wonder about is this top highlight that you have here, June, where there's this common fence as defined by RSA four seventy-four, and I, I suspect that that has to do with that prior definition of fence that included things like ponds and creeks and ditches, that you needed, you couldn't have a situation where it said, you know, your border is a stone wall, but a stone wall's a fence and it has to be a foot away from your border.
Yeah.
So my interpretation is that you would just, you would just remove the except for a common fence as defined, and start that sentence with all fences, and then, in my opinion, this ends up all being very clear, and I, personally, I would, I find this one fairly hard to read.
Yep.
And I tend to agree with Mike's questions about the particular presentation of this. This one, on the other hand, felt very clear to me, and also not particularly risky, one person's opinion.
All right, so it sounds like we need another, perhaps another way of presenting this, so they're side-by-side more, and, and clarity with the RSA four seventy-four. Okay. I've lost a page or something, it's probably stuck. We on to definitions now? If you want, so, um, situated here. So I pulled out, you know, out of multiple pages of definitions, tried to focus in on definitions related to living accommodations, just so you guys would have it in two pages here tonight. The first page, with the exception of a rooming house, I guess, are really, if I got this ordered right, are really more sort of permanent dwellings, and I, we're not going to be able to wordsmith this tonight, so I'd like you to take this home and sort of spend some time with it, please, to try to think, and I know, John, you've given some input on it, I can email it if that's another way to want to look at it. So these are all definitions about dwellings and housing, basically. On the second page gets into some of the temporary housing that we have, bed and breakfast, camping trailer, hotel, motorhome, recreational vehicles, that kind of thing. To, to basically, you know, determine what, we seem to have a lot of sort of recreational vehicle definitions, I think we could make, we can leave them as is, I'm not saying we necessarily have to, but I do think it's time for the board to have a discussion and think about, we don't have to make any changes, but how do these types of housing aspects, we really don't, you know, have any place to allow them to occur. So do we want to do that, or do we want to then find a way to make it more clear that there's not particularly a permitted use to live in a camping trailer? And then define what that means, temporary versus permanent. Is it six months, is it three months, is it that kind of thing? And then the second, the last handout is the one you've seen before, which we, you know, I just wanted to go back over it again, with I had some highlights of the last page about thinking of, if we wanted to try to continue down the path of raising the number of, to have buildings with more than six units, and maybe suggest that that could happen where water and sewer are available, that kind of thing. And I, and just given that update I said earlier about having sort of accessory dwelling units by CUPs, which is conditional use permits, which are given by the planning board, not the zoning board, like a special exception is. So, in general, I think the, many communities are going for sort of that higher density to have that come to the planning board for a conditional use permit, and that does encourage and help reduce the number of steps for a developer, because rather than going to the zoning board for a special exception, and then the planning board for site plan review, they'd come just to the planning board for a conditional use permit to allow the use as, at the same time, they're kind of working on the site plan review, when you get all those details at the same time. If we were to have a newer, bigger development with more units per building, if we want to try that.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yep.
So like, one of the issues that comes up is, if we go over six, how they fit into Plymouth, and Mike has raised some of these questions. I'm looking at the standard criteria for special exception, and it looks like kind of boilerplate stuff, but I, I'm curious how we end up interpreting something like, affect the character, like what does that actually mean?
I know, it's very vague, right. And that, so you can create additional criteria for specific uses, which we have in the ordinance, there's the general criteria, but then for specific types of uses, you also need to meet additional things, including accessory family dwellings, which we don't even know what those are anymore, residential uses in the village commercial zone, we address some aspects about parking, off-site parking facilities, that kind of thing, industrial parks, rooming houses, there's some standards regarding the granting of specific, special exceptions for specific uses, all right, and that's on page sixty-seven, sixty-eight. So we can add another section in there for larger housing, buildings with larger number of housing units has to also meet those criteria, but I have not dug too far into thinking what those would be without knowing if we wanted to even go that route. And, but instead of doing it by special exception, the recommendation I really think is it should be by conditional use permit and coming to the planning board, like we do with the accessory dwelling units, all right? So if somebody wants to do an accessory dwelling unit, adding a second unit, we have criteria, it has to be, you know, the owner of the property has to live there, but they can convert their garage into making it a new apartment and rent it, or let a family member live- their garage into making it a new apartment and rent it, or let a family member live there, or somebody else live there, but that has to come here to the board and go through the set of criteria to this board, not the zoning board.
One thing that's hard with saying it has to be a family member that lives there.
It does not, that we didn't, does not, the accessory dwelling unit does not have that. We still have an old definition stuff in here, because this never got taken out, so it's confusing, you know? We tried to fix one thing but didn't fix another, so it's adding confusion.
It's always something to fix, though. So one thing that I want to bring to the board's attention is, we have, and I don't know how many units are in Fox Park, each building, but there is a mechanism, and Fox Park found it and was allowed. I don't know what year those were built, whether it was late seventies, early eighties, mid eighties, I don't know. But nothing more than six per, per building.
I guess, do we know what the zoning ordinance said at the time that those?
Variance.
They got a variance for that? It wasn't something that was maybe slightly less confusing? Okay.
I believe so.
I can check the records, but again, it's a lot of time to come up with, okay, here's what it was.
There are people in town that know.
I guess if developers currently are feeling drawn back by our current regulations, then even if there are ways around it, there might be something to look at to change, to make it so they don't have to jump through too many hoops and still follow certain guidelines, obviously. But maybe the way Fox Park did it is not what's going to work for everyone, which is why developers are contacting June and she's, you know, doesn't really have an easy answer for how to do this.
I think that's kind of a, because at the last meeting, you made the comment that people had, I guess in the past, come in to get more than six units, but I don't know what it was that they were applying for, but it was never granted.
No, I misunderstood. So I've had just conversations since I've been here since January with two investors in this town, developers that are, and it's not, it's not the nonprofit group that we had the meeting with, two, you know, for-profit people that just want to help create some more housing, and I guess they've seen money in it, but it's not talking about subsidized housing. I don't, you know, I haven't gone down that, but they're like, you can't have more than six units. Ones in an existing building, they want to add more units to it, and they can't.
Is there anything, is there a special, is there anything that we can go from that as opposed to saying, well, you can do up to twelve without, without that? That way, we, I guess.
If they want to go for more than six, they need a variance, and they're, you really can't meet the criteria, there's nothing.
I guess that's what it was, that you were referring to. And so is that something that we can work on changing so that a variance could get given, be given, or?
So the criteria for variance is set by statute, by state law. So it's very specific and it's become harder and harder. And it's even really hard to interpret, in my opinion. But, so they're sp, very specific, but you have to show hardship is the hardest one, and you basically have to say this, this property can't be used for anything else that's conforming with the zoning. And that's like, pretty much every lot could be used for something else. So you're not denying the usability of the lot, you're just saying, you can't have eight units, but you could have six. So financial hardship does not count, all right? It has to be sort of a physical hardship with the property that basically the ordinance is saying you can't do something with. So that's kind of the biggest hurdle to come over. By doing it by special exception is a more, it's kind of a middle ground between saying, yes, go ahead, it's permitted, all you need is a, I mean, it's still going to come for a site plan review. So if we said we do it by either conditional use permit, then this board can au, can authorize that use with certain criteria, or we could keep it by special exception. I mean, right now, to have three, four, five, six units in a building, you need to have a special exception. Or maybe it's over three, what is it? Yeah, three, four, five, or six. And you need, unless it's in the village commercial zone, it's not allowed in a single family, but in all the other zones, you need a special exception. So you, we still have that. So anything over two units, basically, unless it's in downtown, needs a special exception.
Is the, June, I can't remember, is the downtown village, are they allowed more than six units?
No. No places, yeah.
How many, oh, sorry, they only put six on the one above the old fitness center, behind, behind Alex Ray's new building.
That is Alex Ray's new building.
Right. Well, when, before he bought it, the.
But those are in that.
There were only six put up there.
So.
Six big ones.
We've talked a little bit about affordable housing, just tonight, and smaller lots being more affordable. You know, it's not just homeownership that, there's a, there's a barrier to just living in a town like Plymouth. And that's, you know, affordability of housing is an issue, not just for homeownership. So, and I think the issue at hand is for developers to come in and be limited to six units, their, you know, their profit margin isn't big enough for them, this is what you were saying earlier, the profit margin isn't big enough for them to be able to construct a building for, that might have affordable apartment units in it, if we're just doing, if they're doing six units. So, I mean, that's kind of what we're dealing with here, is affordability and accessibility of housing for, for people living in Plymouth. Right? So the issue is, are we worried about the aesthetics of the town? That large apartment buildings are not part of what we want to see in this area? Is, I mean, is, is that kind of what we're, we're thinking?
I think that mechanism was put in place by the town, thinking ahead that it would help keep the rural character of Plymouth. And I think that's.
Well, I'm misreading June's proposals here. It goes back to what I was saying earlier on. If we limit it to where water and sewer are available, most of that rural character is untouched. Where water and sewer is available is pretty limited, and it would allow for denser development in those areas without touching most of the ag zone and certain other areas of town where those services aren't available. And they need those services anyway, so, I mean, they don't need, but like, it makes a lot easier, so it, it, I think this, this makes a lot of sense to me.
And you could say ten, or twenty, or eighteen, you could pick an, I mean, I don't know why it's six. I guess that's the, you know, I don't think we want to go unlimited, you know, because also we have a height limit, so you're going to have something big, you know?
I do think that goes back to some of the character of the town, because I remember when Fox, when they were building Fox Park Apartments, there was a lot of controversy. There were a lot of people that wanted nothing to do with it, they wanted no part of it, they didn't want it in town, especially in the, than that area, in the residential areas. But it did go through, and of course, it's been fine. But I think that's a lot of it. I think it's the character of the town, they don't want to see these big developments in these areas.
This is where I'm more concerned with what that, what we mean by, you know, affect the character. I'm more concerned by that than even the number.
Yeah.
I almost don't even care about the number, but affect the character, what do we mean by that? And can we actually define that? It's hard to actually define, but.
And I guess I'm wondering why is it housing that's tripping us up on defining character? When you don't hear us talking about it, when we're talking about, you know, other things that might be allowed in something like the, you know, the ag zone, you know, it's business, you know, businesses, big box stores, in my opinion, and, you know, I'm not trying to start a whole different debate, but that also impacts the rural character of this town, so.
Much of which has gone in, in some of the prime agricultural land.
So I guess I'm just wondering, why is it housing that's tripping us up on rural character?
I don't really think that it is, excuse me. I don't think that it is, because I know that the character will say, along Tenny Mountain Highway, when things started going up, a lot of people wanted the character to be similar to the old vets place that is now Harris Brothers. They wanted to keep with that appearance down through. And then you saw these small metal strip malls going in, and so that's, it, it's not just housing, we just happen to be talking about housing. But I do think, you're right, it's, it's, we shouldn't limit it to housing.
And I've probably mentioned the rural character many times when talking about the ag zone, not necessarily dense housing, but just losing it, cutting it up. I've mentioned it many times. You know, I see the problems downtown on a regular basis, when you get a lot of kids all living in a congested building, and you see around them how the residents are just in outrage of what's going on. And it's hard enough sometimes when you only have four or six units in a building, but then you've got many more young adults or whoever might be in there. And it's, just seems like a recipe for, for more problems, and then you spread it out from just the downtown, now we're spreading it out to other areas. And, you know, I, I don't see a problem with it. I, I always like, a good friend of mine, Ben Billen, always says, you know, what are we trying to fix? Do we have a problem that we're, what is, what is it that we need to fix right now? And I don't, I'm not getting it.
It's a housing shortage, and it's pretty big news, like, all over the place, including locally. And I'm not certain we're really even talking about expanding student housing. In fact, there's more and more students recently going on campus. We're talking about expanding housing for families and other people who want to move here and can't afford to live here, because there are so few available units. You can look at, like, the real estate prices, they're skyrocketing.
And it's not always an issue of what are we trying to fix. Sometimes it's an issue of what might be coming down the road that we need to be ready for.
Spin on that. Mind me asking?
There's going to be changes. Are we going to be prepared to handle the changes in a way that's going to be beneficial to the town? Or are the changes going to come in and impose themselves on us without us having any control at all? That's what the planning board needs to try to do, is planning what's the future going to bring?
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that one hundred percent, Carl. I think that the mechanism that we have is six units was to stave off. Large buildings with a lot of people, population in a, in a condensed area. I would love to see us do more with single-family homes. That's my preference. Make the lot small.
That's certainly one of the potential solutions, but that's not going to work for everybody.
So which?
And I think six units, that's an arbitrary number. And I think twelve units could be done and look even better than the six units and not create any more problems than already exist in the six units. But it would be, allow more people to move into Plymouth, and right now, that's not happening.
And I, someone mentioned about Tenny Mountain Highway and the big box stores. The big box stores bring in a lot of tax revenue. And more than six units in a building, if it's not going to be college kids, which are one issue, then it could be families with a lot of kids in the school. And kids in the school versus a big box store that's going to bring in a lot of tax revenue, you know, it's, some people might find that pretty easy to distinguish which one they want.
They can have both.
It could also be workers who can afford to live here. It could also be workers who could afford to live here.
Yes, I'd also wonder too, like, what is impacting the rural character of the town more, a twelve-unit apartment building or a twelve-acre lot that's cut into twelve lots? And with each, each with a building on there, which is impacting our, the rural character of the town more? Or if we make it even, you know, smaller lots allowable in certain areas, twenty-four lots on half-acre lots on that twelve-acre parcel, so.
This is where I would think it would be pretty interesting to see, because the question's never been posed to the town. I don't think there's much mention of this in our master plan, where we get our directive on what to do with zoning. I would, if this is such a pressing issue, I would think we'd want to invite people to come in to town hall, and, and it could be that everybody is gung ho and it becomes pretty evident that there's very little opposition to changing from six. Or it could be that everybody's happy with six. But it'd be neat to see what the public say, because we got it wrong with changing to the three-acre zoning and all the things that we tried to do. We thought, the planning board thought it was a great idea, but come to find out, there was no one in town really for it. There was a lady on one of the roads back in the ag zone that was all for it. But there was a great deal of dis, of unhappiness and uneasiness with what the planning board was doing. So I, I always say, let's find out what the citizens want before the planning board decides what we want, us six or whatever people. But that's, I really think we need that input first, before we get to the end of the process. I'll keep saying it over and over again.
I would also say, if you want denser single-family housing and more single-family housing, our current minimum lot size is a half acre, which, like, most of the single-family residential doesn't actually conform to, which is a pretty big lot size for denser single-family development.
That's the single-family zone?
Yeah, it's half acre, which most of it doesn't even meet.
If it's, if it's, if it has access to water and sewer.
No, that's without, I think.
I thought it was just, that was just a number, I thought.
I think it's quarter-acre zoning.
Is there?
With water and sewer.
I've never seen quarter-acre anywhere.
It's half acre with municipal sewer.
Yeah.
If you have on-site septic, it's one acre.
Yeah, so it's a quarter acre, and, I mean, a lot of the lots are actually like, I mean, it's half acre, a lot of the lots are actually like a quarter acre.
I take that back, but then, one acre in the ag zone, so.
One acre in the ag zone. Without.
Unless it's a cluster residential development.
Yeah.
And a lot of that could be because. Pressure to have bigger lots.
See, it does sound like half acre in the ag zone with water and sewer would increase that density without having a disruptive effect.
But it is, we're saying, half acre.
It's an acre right now.
Acre with water and sewer?
In the ag zone.
It's one acre in the ag zone, and it can be half acre if the cluster residential development, which is actually another mistake, because it's actually called the open space, but Article Five. Somebody wants to do a new development and they wanted to have smaller lots and conserve, you know, have some area of open space within that larger parcel, they can kind of trade the density from one acre to make it more clustered, basically.
Right, but there's no distinction in there in the ag zone with relation to water and sewer?
I think it, I think it does. I think it goes to half acre in the ag zone if there's on, if there's municipal water and municipal sewer.
If it's in a cluster development, it's in a cluster. Yes, that's what it says. Yeah, that's what it says. Just looked at it.
But that doesn't increase the density for, if he's got ten acres, it doesn't increase the density to twenty. It does nothing, it's still.
Open initiative, open air.
It just means that you have, you can build less roadway to access the entire lot. That's all you're saying.
You put it together a little bit tighter.
No, you can have half acre lots, so you can have more density, yes. You're allowed to have more units, you know?
You're allowed to have more density, but not when looking at the total size of your piece of property, because you, as you said, you're trading that density for non-density elsewhere.
Yes.
So you, you get more, if you only look at the ex, the section of your land that you subdivided, yes, you get more density, but if you look at the total that you started with, the, the density doesn't change.
No, if there's sewer, if there's town sewer, you can get half acre. That's your starting density point.
I thought you said that the ag zone didn't have a special.
No, with, for cluster, it is, yeah.
But cluster's the open-air thing where you're trading, you're trading density.
But the starting point for the amount of density is at half acre, so you can actually go smaller.
With sewer. With sewer.
Or.
Even if you don't have a cluster.
Or a community's private sewer system.
Yeah, right.
So even if you don't have a cluster, you could still have half acre, as I understand it.
So it's really only impacting major subdivisions and not minor subdivisions?
Right.
June, you've mentioned a couple times that a couple different builders have called and say they're interested and say they won't do it, because my thought is, they're saying there's not enough money in the form, right? That's basically what they're saying.
I don't want to go that far with it, and have it been that specific, but they've asked and said it's hard to do.
Right, which is another way of saying, anyways, have they, has anyone you've talked to said, if it was eight units, if it was ten units, this would be reasonable? I mean, is there, is there a sense, or is there someone we can talk to?
I could ask one of the people that was looking at more of a vacant piece of land. Another case, it's trying to rework an existing building. So what that number is for that, I don't know what the final number would be for that. So what that number is for that, I don't know what the final number would be for that situation.
So Mark and um to kind of piggyback that. We've had even workforce housing come to Plymouth and um without any issues, did six units in each of their buildings. And made a really nice development. It's very attractive and some of the pictures, the guy that came who was really pushing workforce housing. Quite a bit of percentage of what his talk was about, showed other developments, very similar to what Plymouth did was, it appeared to be six units or less. So we've got a lot of the bases covered, it appears to me. Even workforce housing is okay with it. That um I don't feel like it's a big rush to change anything.
Except that we're seeing those developments happening around us and they're not happening in this town. So there's some, it seems like there's some gap where, where we're not seeing lots of houses being built here. Where we're seeing those same houses being built elsewhere.
Well, one thing that um we may not be seeing a lot of development here in Plymouth. And the blaring reason is our tax rate. It is extremely expensive to live in this town. And you empty more units into the town and it's just like a snowball. Um once we get the tax rate taken care of, and maybe there's some people who love the tax rate high because it is keeping young families out of Plymouth. That can't afford to own a home. Um but once we get our tax rate, if there's a way to do that. We will get, the housing will start happening again. But that's limiting Plymouth right now, by far. There's nothing more. We're gonna see in June's, one of her main functions working for the town when she was hired is economic development. And it is really hard to bring in economic development into a town that has the tax rate like Plymouth or Bristol. And um so it's nothing, it's, it's tough nut to crack when you have a lot of your downtown taken up by a university. And I've, I've joked with the university. Because Plymouth has an unfair advantage of financing universities and the kids that go to school here. Whereas most other states, Carl, you're probably aware of this, in Ohio, that um the state anties up quite a bit of money for the university. And New Hampshire relies on the university, you're on your own. So what do they do? They go into the community that they're in and especially with Plymouth. We're funding the university, Plymouth, not the surrounding towns, not where all the kids are coming from, those communities. Plymouth is funding that university and shouldering a lot of that burden. Whereas in Ohio, the community that houses the university is not seeing that burden like we are here in Plymouth. So I feel like when those college kids graduate, I should be in those pictures with the parents. Because we're taking care of them, we're supporting them.
One of the things that Ohio has, however, that New Hampshire does not have, is multi-levels of taxes. You've got state income tax.
Sales tax?
Is that why you left Carl?
You've got state sales tax. You've got county income tax, you've got city income tax.
That's why we have Carl here.
That's why I retired here.
For one way or another.
It's a nice place.
So I'm sorry, because, I mean, the point though is because we have no state income tax to pay for that. The local towns and other municipalities through property tax and other things end up subsidizing that. So it has to come from somewhere.
So there's a mechanism.
This is a bigger conversation, that's probably not a planning board conversation.
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's why I'm gonna say let's, let's stop derailing it here and honestly, I think um. Um I don't think we've got enough oomph on the planning board to do, to make any changes about the housing. So I think that I'm, I would like to see, I don't know, what do what folks say? I would like to see us move forward with looking at the, the, the housing and the greater than six units.
I agree.
Sorry, I'm looking at you, Susan.
I know.
This is not a binding decision that we're gonna say, we are doing greater than six. This is like moving forward, we don't wanna waste June's time if we're just gonna keep derailing this or to, hang on one second, Mike. Um if we're gonna keep just talking around and through and over this that we've been doing for, for meeting after meeting, so.
I think it deserves, deserves discussion, I just am not sure I'm there.
Mike?
I was gonna ask you, am I, am I recognized to speak since I was late?
You're, sure, yeah.
So let, let me, I just spend two minutes. The problem we're having up at Tenny, as you folks know, we're, we're, the establishment is originally designed for eighteen hundred units. There's only a hundred and eighty-seven of them built up there. We have our own water infrastructure up there, as well as sewage, five hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons a day. We only use fifty-seven, uh excuse me, we only use twenty-three thousand gallons a day of it. When we look at the original model of laying out, whether it's duplexes or six packs or less, we can't make the economics work. I mean, the developers have been coming in trying to sub, it will only work with eight units or twelve packs. Kind of like what Lincoln has built up there, because they have to pay for the infrastructure that's up there. It's not owned by Village Sewer and Water. We own all that infrastructure, it's an aging infrastructure. The town doesn't pay for our roadways, as you probably know, that's why they destroyed up there. And sewage and water, we had no trash pickup, so there's, there's no support. So the developers, along with myself, would be very favorable to be able to introduce eight packs and twelve packs. A much, that's a model in the areas that we were originally on playing, duplexes. So I just wanted to throw that out. When we spoke to, back when I think it was Sharon, the, the planning, she was working with the plan. We came to her, we, we were entertaining this and we were also gonna agree to, out of the development, if we could get that variance to put eight or twelve units. We would make sure that twenty-five percent of the homes built up there would be for the aging population. To help kill two birds with one stone, which was really nice. And then the, the second part is because we're working with the university and looking at putting some housing up there for the university. We would always remain to be for profit. We wouldn't make it nonprofit, so the community wouldn't lose, or the town wouldn't lose that tax bracket to a nonprofit. So these, this was all, this is all hedging back to eight or twelve unit model for a development. So I just wanted to throw that out, out there, just so you have some more information to make some intelligent decision. Cause it is a big development that we're trying to find somebody to come in and assist us with. And it would solve a lot of problems and wouldn't put so much money on there. You know all the points, so I'd say. Thank you.
So I um visiting all the different ski areas I, I have visited over the years from ah New Hampshire, Maine. It's very rare that you don't see something of size with many units, whether they're time shares or condos or. Very rare that you don't see it, and Plymouth doesn't. And I don't know whether there's, you're considered recreation. Is there a recreation um overlay potential that the board could look at? That could allow in, what would be nice about an overlay of so- of sorts? Is that it brings in income from out of the area on the weekends, potentially mainly. And um is a huge benefit for the town of Plymouth that something like an overlay really would, would make sense to look at for this board.
If, if, and I'm just gonna go back, if we go back thirty-five, forty years, back to when it was owned by Sam Hall. If the state recognized it and gave that thirty-five or forty million dollars to build the Tenny Mountain Highway out, there must be a value up there. I mean, from an economic standpoint, to be able to grow based on density. And unfortunately, that model back then doesn't, it didn't scale out properly with inflation, obviously. So that's, we'll, we'll be coming back to you, asking for an eight to twelve unit density model. Just so you know, I just wanted to throw that out there.
On that.
So.
So can I make a suggestion? So that might be, I mean, I guess, thank you for giving us a number, I like the idea of twelve packs.
Yeah.
These are what other ski moms are doing. It's a trend, it's ski moms, eight and twelve packs.
Come, kegs.
So maybe, you know, is that a number, an upper limit and we do it by conditional use permit? And then I can bring forward some criteria, I have some ideas, I just haven't invested the time yet because of the discussion. So would that work for the next meeting? Um to keep, I mean, I'm hearing some people's, you know, you know, some opposition, but it's mainly one voice. And I wanna hear from the rest of the board to get his consent to help direct my time to this, so.
I think that's a good idea. I think that sounds good as well. Um so was it twelve a decent number, do you think? As opposed to fourteen or eighteen or fifteen?
Twelve's a, a magical number.
But the, what, what's interesting there, talking about Tenny, is, I mean, we might think about the wording too of where public water and sewer are available. Cause we're talking about a slightly different model than.
Yeah, it might be just.
It also works.
They have sewer and they have a public water supply, it may not be town water.
Okay.
But it's a recognized public drinking water supply.
Okay.
As opposed to individual well, you know.
And really, as long as, so it's essentially along the sewer line, which is.
Basically sewer is one of the limiting factors.
With a, with an N.
Yep.
And so we're thinking of like a residential over, recreational overlay that would be the trigger to allow that?
No, I think that makes, that adds a layer of complication that I think.
Then I think that you would have a hard time trying to put your time into it.
So I think that, so again, yeah, like June said, that's one voice, what, what do?
I wonder about the recreational overlay, I mean, why, I mean, which again puts it in the court of, we're supporting commercial development. But we're not supporting people living here, cause as long as it's recreational, we're not talking about actual housing for people.
We still allow six, because we're not saying no to that.
I, I am not in agreement with the recreational overlay model.
I think that adds a layer of complication if we can say something along with a public water and sewer. That essentially limits where it's gonna be by where the sewer is. Because, and you know, you can get a public water supply elsewhere if you need it. You're not gonna just get, I guess you could have a, I'm not gonna go there, but I know, Widmore Shores Development has its own public sewer.
Yeah, so technically there's a public supply.
Yeah, and a public, a public.
So it's really sewer is the more.
Yeah, sewer is kind of the limiting factor. So that limits pretty severely where any type of um development can be. And then if we really wanna think about, you know, being very specific, you know, there might be some places along Yedden Road and Fairgrounds Road. That might be concerning as far as rural character type of thing. However, I think there's, it's, there's a lot of other things that could go in there that can certainly impact rural character. So if we really wanna get into a conversation about that, then um.
I think you can say goodbye to Plymouth the way that you see it now, if you did that just with the limitation of water and sewer. But if you did it with an overlay in a recreational area, then you keep the rural character, but you allow the ski area to be a ski area. And I think that's what Mike was alluding to, not necessarily townwide. And I would be real, I think you would see a lot of opposition.
I think it's important for the Tenny Mountain Ski Area and I certainly support that entire concept. But I think it needs to be a wider base than that. I think there needs to be, as has been mentioned, Yedden Road and Fairgrounds Road. And there's probably other areas that are already served by water and sewer. That an eight or twelve unit structure uh would work out perfectly well. What I've noticed about most of the multiple unit structures around Plymouth is they're all rectangular, concrete block buildings with no character. And that's not what we saw when that guy came and showed us all those images from other towns. There's no reason why Plymouth shouldn't have something like that.
We can't dictate.
No, but we can say, hey, uh if you're gonna put something in, we wanna see the design first, cause we're not gonna accept garbage designs. We want something that looks good and fits with the town.
So I've gotta say that I'm very happy with the voices and everybody being able to say their, their part. And I think this is a really good process and there's no, no intimidation, it's, it's all everybody speaking their mind. And everybody is extremely respectful to each other. And uh I would just suggest to this board that we should not fear the public. And at the beginning of the process, not at the end. And I think you will probably see um a different result than what the board may come up with. And different feedback, that's all.
So the public is welcome to attend every meeting?
They will start to them.
And, and just a reminder that we are all volunteers that are appointed by the select board, who are the elected officials of our town. So we are doing our job here as appointed planning board members, so. I don't know why, I just wanted to make that point.
No, I, I, I like the idea of exploring the expanded unit on the sewer line too. I, I just, if you go from six to eight, six to twelve even. And it sounds like Mike has some thoughts up in Tenny Mountain. I, I don't believe we're gonna have a flood of contractors showing up to Plymouth to build twelve unit buildings. That's just my thought, I think there will be some, but I don't think it's going to be this large outpouring of twelve unit buildings around town. So I think we should explore it and I think, again, what we've always said is, we can propose something, whether it's twelve units or eight units. But it will be the public's choice and whether or not it's approved. And we could just, we could propose it in March and it could get turned down and we're back at six units. And I think that that's um, you know, what we're here to do really again, is to plan and to see what possibly might work. For the greater community, whether it's a recreational area or other people in town that are looking to move here. So I think that makes sense to continue to explore the units or increasing the units.
Would you be okay, cause I love the idea of exploring and that's what makes the town better. Is, would you be all right to have a special meeting to get the sense of the public before we get to the hearing? Portion where they can all speak, it's not necessarily hearing, but we're asking and putting out information to, hey, show up, let's, let's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean.
You're welcome.
June, couldn't we, uh just real quick, I mean, you know, we're gonna meet again um two weeks, whatever, you know, and.
Only got a couple more meetings.
Couple more meetings prior, so whether it's two weeks or four weeks and.
Or fifty-four weeks?
One thing.
Yeah.
Go ahead, June. Um on the one hand, you're asking for real specificity on the handout I gave you because I didn't put in the text of certain things. And then you wanna have a public hearing on just this big concept. And trust me, we've had enough discussion on the big concept. We need to have details to present because to just say going to six units, that's scary. I mean, going over six units, go to a twelve pack, that's scary. I would like to hear, I'm hearing enough people here to continue to explore this, so Mike can give it another layer of coming up with some criteria under which we may allow this. And then we have some specifics for people to work with and feel like maybe this would work. Maybe if we add an additional criteria or take out this one, that's fine. But to just wholeheartedly say yes or no to a twelve pack is, you know, um I think not doing the work that the planning board should do. And you know, so it's like this balance of having, um taking that next step. That's why we put, we work hard to get to the specific amendments we wanna put in the ordinance and then you have the public hearing. Yes, people can come and listen and call me up or whatever, that's fine. But um we can't just keep talking about it. And I feel like if we just leave it like, are we gonna go more than six units? It's just, I mean, clearly it's been a very open-ended question and we've spent hours doing this so far, so. I guess I'm at a point where I would like to hear from the board, I'm hearing from Mark, Carl, John, Rebecca at least, Susan maybe. Of, you know, continuing to look into this. And on the next step is I'll try to give you some more criteria of how this might work in a more specific way of how we can fit it in our existing messy ordinance. Does that sound good?
I agree with June, I think it's important to have specifics to present to the public, important to have the public involved. But if the public's involved too early, it will drown us in minutia. We'll never get anything done. Everyone will have their own personal comment on things that aren't important.
I think also, I wanna go back to the master plan and the amount of public input that went into creating the master plan and the value of that. And our job is to take what was in the master plan and put it into action. If we, kind of alongside what Carl said, if we poll the public at every step, um we're gonna get nowhere. If we, kind of alongside what Carl said, if we pull the public at every step, we're gonna get nowhere. And so really, we're taking the master plan, information we gather, um, from other experts, like we had some housing experts here just a couple week, a month or two ago. We're taking new information, making the best decisions we can, and then moving forward them, with them. If people want to get involved more, they're welcome to come to every single one of our meetings.
So Rebecca, we had three articles that we were proposing. We were ready for the hearing.
I wasn't done. So my thought is that we get this through to the public hearing, which is when the public can help us craft those specific ordinances. And then it gets voted up or down. And I really not, we've gone through again and again and again what happened last year with those zoning ordinances. The door is closed on those. They are done. I just don't think we need to talk about them anymore.
Oh, I do.
We are moving forward.
Because we, we said the same thi-
Hang on a sec.
Sure.
June?
I would like to make a comment, and I've kind of refrained from saying this, but what you guys were talking about when I started in January and had public hearings, you did not have specific changes to the zoning ordinance. I, you know, kept my mouth shut, but I'll say it now, that was a mess. And it wasn't because the concept was bad. You never, it never, staff never put it into the ordinance. Where does it go? That's the part you have to do for a public hearing, and that's what I'm trying to get us to. But that's the process that's used by the planning process in general. So to just have another meeting, to talk about whatever, is not gonna be effective use of my time or anybody else's time. So let's work on the criteria, let's move ahead, let's forget about last year, because there wasn't any warrant article that mentioned really any specificity. And I, I can, you know, go on and on about that, and I'm just trying to be polite about it, but.
Yeah, I, I agree.
It was not, and that's not an offense to this board. It's, you know, it would never happen downstairs, what needed to happen to make it hap, to make, to really concretely take the concepts that were being explored and find a way to put them into the ordinance.
So I would agree with that.
So let's let that go, because it never really happened in the first place.
Well, wait a minute.
And then, think about these other things for this year, okay? Can we just?
Well, no, I, I would still, I would agree with that. But the concepts that you came up with, you said you got from the master plan, and that this is what the people wanted, that you were proposing, and you found out the people didn't want it, but you claimed that it came from the master plan. So now we're back and it's almost deja vu. We're looking, oh, it's the master plan that we're do, everything can be claimed as the master plan. But I think you're, the public's pretty smart, and I think you need to include them at the beginning of the process, rather than saying, we know what we're doing, we're getting it from the master plan, this is it, let's go to the hearing. It got pretty expensive for us to get the word out. It's not easy. And I, I applaud the board for trying to get the word out. But there's not a lot of, how many people are watching this meeting right now?
If I may say, we're wasting the public's time if we don't have specific things that we wanna present to them.
But you can get the, the clear direction of where you need to go. Otherwise, you're spinning the wheels and we're wasting June's time. How many people are watching this right now? Two? One?
All right, um, so I would like to take a general temperature check with the board. Are we good to get June to spend some time on twelve units? What a conditional use permit might look like, what the conditions would be for that?
Yes.
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 Mark?
Yep.
Mike?
I would say we're not at that point yet, so I'd say no.
And I'm a yes. So June, let's go forward with that, and we will, um, I would like to just, June's gonna, June puts a lot of work into this stuff. Um, we get always at least six days to review this. Let's make sure that we're giving everything a good read, especially because we're gonna get some stuff that's coming up fairly soon with some slight changes, right, you said, to presentation change and some of the stuff. So, um, yeah, so let's do some homework. And then maybe you and I can get together and make a list of homework. We can send out a reminder middle of next week for, I can send that out too, so.
And if anybody wants printed copies prior to the meeting, I'm happy to have them for people to come pick up or mail out to you, or whatever, let me know.
A, a quick comment on the presentation angle. I, I think that's important for us, but I think it's even more important as we're going into a hearing to be able to hand somebody who's in that hearing, who hasn't participated in twenty conversations.
Right, right.
Since January, to be able to look at that and say, I understand what's being proposed here. So earlier, my kind of objections to this presentation was less about the content and, and less about my preparedness and more about what's somebody gonna understand or see when they pick this up cold.
Yep.
And I wanna make sure that we're presenting things in a way that's understandable.
I apologize if I put you on the defensive. That was not my intention. I just wanna make sure that we're.
I wanted to clarify that so that, that.
Yep.
That both, so that June understood that.
Yeah.
I'm not thinking about just right now, but when this goes to hearing and the public understanding the document.
And I think that, um, the zoning amendments, what's being addressed is also, I think that can be turned into a communication tool for us as well, because it really does talk about what are the problems we're trying to solve with these changes, and here's why we're doing this, so.
So at the next meeting, we'll be getting the next, her, research. And the public that attends, will they have input, will they be able to speak if they, if they have questions about it or they have comments, will they be able to speak?
Right, yes. Um, I don't think we've ever not allowed for public comment, at public comment time. So if there's people here to speak on it, it certainly don't wanna silence those voices. If it, there's a lot of people with a lot of comments, then we might have to do some education, because as Zach mentioned, you look at this stuff, and if you're not looking at the zoning ordinance frequently, it's, I mean, it's hard enough for us to look at this stuff, let alone somebody who doesn't, um, who doesn't, yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, we all are.
I get it.
Um, and I think a lot of the challenges we deal with in getting, putting stuff to vote, in getting stuff to the public is a lack of understanding on the planning process, because it is not simple. So, um, yes, so if people are here, but we'll have to make sure that we shape how we're communicating about it at that meeting to make sure it's clear what we're trying to do, so.
Could we also ask, um, the new chief to come to the meeting and?
The police chief?
Yeah, fire chief, the police chief.
For a meeting about the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, if we're talking about more than six units, they would probably have a lot to add to the conversation.
Um, I mean, of course, yeah. I can either try to get their input either in writing or, you know.
And probably the code enforcement officer as well.
Yep, good.
What do you guys use for technology?
That, that, it's eight thirty, Mar.
No, I mean, I'm just meaning like, I mean, we're going through and editing a lot of things. It's so much nicer nowadays to edit things live on, on these or through like a Google Doc type system rather. And you, you can easily go through and strike things and say, this is what I'm taking out, this is what I'm proposing to add. Everyone can go in there and add comments and say, I like this, I don't like this, I don't.
Unfortunately, not everyone can go in there and add comments unless we're all sitting here.
Yep.
Because that would be a meeting, and you can't do that in private.
So you, you can't?
Can't.
Can't collaborate asynchronously in a Google Doc in this meeting legally on this board. We could here, we could, if we were here, we could do that.
Right, but if she brings it.
We can put it on the screen and.
On the screen.
It just, I mean, all of this just seems really archaic.
It does.
But.
Overwhelming.
That too.
I'd do better with this stuff than trying to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not the computer.
Well, everyone had, right, everyone has preference.
Yeah, it's, it's challenging. I think you raise a very important point that is, you know, tech, the challenge of technology on volunteer boards and throughout town halls around the state, I think it's, uh, varying capabilities, so. All right, um, public comments, or, sorry, any, anything else from the board? Any public comments unreal, that haven't been, yeah, any public comments? I can just leave it at that.
Well, yes. I think you would, uh, in your time, review, uh, research, what you wanna do on housing. You would do yourself a favor if you would go online to federal, uh, housing administrations, definitions of housing. Do the same thing with state definition, state housing, definition of housing. The National Fire Protection Association, definition of housing. The insurance agency, definition of housing. The primary reason is, they're the, they're the people that have the authority, have the jurisdiction to control what you do or don't do with your house, period. That's what this board's all about, compliance of existing ordinances that you establish. And they're all set on numbers, okay? So the house is, a house, but it needs water and sewer, stormwater drainage. You have driveways, so how many car trips per day does a house generate by these statutes? That's why your roads are built, there's certain dimensions, okay? Everything that has a word for a description in that ordinance has numbers to it. It's all the math. I'm an engineer. It's all math. And that's how you get to an ordinance that's reasonable, that's fair, and in the public interest, and meets the criteria of what the people want to see in the town of Plymouth.
What was that site? Say, what was that site again?
There, there, you go, I don't know the accurate website of the government housing authority. The NTIS, um, you can look it up online. That those, go into the glossary of each one of those agencies, I mean, what the definition of words that they'll use to descri, to describe what you're talking about. And that's where you wanna see if there's commonality. So if you're all talking the same words or the same subject about multifamily house or whatever kind of housing, okay? If you don't, you have what you call a technical infeasibility. So that's where one agency says thou shall and the other one says thou shall not. We had this problem with the International Building Code System that we're a part of and the National Fire Protection Association codes this dance for very simple things. So this is why this reevaluation of our definitions is so important, uh, for our municipal ordinance. But we wanna make sure that we have a rationale from the state RSAs on the same subject, because you're gonna get approval from DES for the, uh, site, the water, it's pollution control. And then Department Environmental Service for your stormwater drainage. These are all connected to the subject of what you're trying to build, so. And I think you need to reevaluate on your fence. Uh, they have architect, agricultural fencing requires at least a six-foot or higher fence to retain animals that don't require a building permit, because the four-foot came from the licensing requirements for engineer for a structure built for over four feet requires a licensed engineer.
I believe the agricultural fences are accepted from that. Um, thanks, Frank. Anything else? Who would like to do the honors this evening?
I'll move to a join.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.